Good evening, welcome to the October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Everett Planning Commission. Chair, Vice Chair Atkins, would you read the land acknowledgement?
Yes. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahobes people and their successors, the Tleilip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Ayana, my apologies, I did not ask you to call the role, but if you wouldn't mind.
Mm-hmm. Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Shelby.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes from our previous meeting. Were there any corrections to the minutes? Is there any objection to approving the minutes as they were presented? Okay, then without objection, the meeting minutes from September seventeenth have been approved, and we are ready to move on to reports from commissioners. Commissioners, any reports? Okay, then we'll turn it over to staff.
Okay, good evening, and welcome to the table where we will be able to roll up our sleeves a little bit and try a little bit more of a conversational format while keeping in mind that folks are watching and listening online, so we'll try to remember to use microphones and make as much of the work that we do here transparent as possible while still getting the opportunity to, like I said, get a little bit more conversational with a pretty complex piece of work, which is sharing with you some progress that staff has made on the zoning map and zoning framework. So this is the culmination, a culmination, a waypoint along the way in this periodic update, but a really important one that builds on, as you can see in your packet, for the, for the agenda item here on twelve meetings' worth of work on the land use element, the growth alternatives, the urban form and design and development elements, and the land capacity analysis. All of this has to do with what uses, sizes of buildings, and those sorts of things are allowed where, so has at their endpoint a zoning map and a set of development regulations to implement the comprehensive plan. So excited to get to this, to this point. A lot of work left to do, but this is an important milestone. Happy Community Planning Month. The month of October is designated nationally to, to celebrate the work that, that planning does throughout the country to make great communities happen for all, everywhere. So there are some events and things that, that we may share with you that are going on around October. A couple of things going on with the city council and elsewhere around planning. We're partway through consideration of a rezone for thirteen oh one Lombard, previously known as the Waits Motel. This was a rezone that was a, as a rezone that does not require a comprehensive plan amendment. It is a review process three B in our procedures in Title fifteen. That takes a hearing examiner recommendation to the council who sits in a quasi-judicial capacity to decide on the proposed rezone of that point five five acre parcel, I think it is, to neighborhood business.
What's it currently zoned?
Currently zoned R two, R two.
So the idea is to?
Uh, microphone.
So the idea is to upzone it to allow more, more, so it's currently residential?
It's, well, it has been a motel for fifty years or more. The rest of the block on one side is R two residential. It, I think, is near the Donovan District, maybe right up next to it. The, across the alley is Broadway fronting parcels, which are mixed urban and seven, six, six-floor height limit. The idea with this one is to try to get it back. The city had to move on condemnation for the property. It's chronic nuisance property. It's been cleared. It is now vacant and fenced and owned by the city, trying to get that back into productive use as soon as possible. So the neighborhood business zone was one in implementing zone of the single-family designation in the comprehensive plan, and one that would have allowed for, would allow for townhouse development. And one of the goals of the council was to support homeownership, and this seemed like we're studying in the periodic update. You can see here, we've got the MU fifteen zone, I believe, for that parcel, but we still have quite a bit of work to go to get that underway, so.
Was that, was that not required to go through, or was it allowed to go through this procedure because of the condemnation and the city ownership, or was what?
No, it is a, that's how our procedures set up a single property. In other words, not area-wide rezone.
So presumably, if anybody had purchased it, they could have failed themselves of that procedure?
Correct, correct, yes. So the city's intent is to process this rezone, and on the third reading with the council, which will be eight days from now, we're anticipating to bring to the council the property disposition agreement, which will probably restrict the business side of neighborhood business and limit it to townhouses and ownership product, at least in the beginning. So obviously, a, not a, not a traditional path for our, our work in our rezone, but one that was expedient, and hopefully we'll get that property into productive use as soon as possible.
Sorry, I've asked so many questions about this. I'm, interesting, I did follow the whole stuff about the, the condemnations. That area, I mean, being near the hospital, which is very high, I mean, is there opportunity to, I don't know how big it is, and it's, I can't really vision, but is there opportunity there maybe to allow for something bigger, which, you know, might be, I don't know?
Yeah, that's what we're looking at in the comprehensive plan. I think there is a balance to be struck between speed and, and thinking of all the potential there. But it's something that the council is, is asking some of those same questions right now. So we'll keep you posted on that, but definitely in, in the planning room.
What's the address again?
Thirteen oh one Lombard. The outdoor multipurpose facility, the stadium project that the, that the city is working on, has completed the draft environmental impact statement and the comment period for it. We received maybe thirty or so comments on the, on the EIS. Actually, most of them were on which site should be selected. Variety of viewpoints, always, always interesting to hear some of the perspectives, both on baseball, on land use, on downtown development, on redevelopment, on transportation, and all the other topics that come up there. So the city council is moving forward with their work on choosing an alternative location for the stadium.
Okay, there are just the two sites, the current site and then the downtown?
Correct.
Area.
Yep, between Centered on Wall and McDougall. For the planning commission, we'd talked about our next meeting being November fourth rather than November fifth. That would be Monday, not a Tuesday. Let me make sure I got my dates right. Correct. November fifth, our normal meeting date is a Tuesday and a, a Tuesday with some stuff going on. So we'd talked about moving that meeting till Monday the fourth. Thought this would be a good time to confirm that with everybody, and then we'll put that on the agenda and the webpage and everything. Cut.
Objections to that question?
What would the other options be?
Uh, any other day, any other day, and, any other day, we could not hold it, and we could wait till the second, no, this is third Tuesday in November, I believe, is Thanksgiving, or too close to Thanksgiving.
We're not having a third Tuesday of October, we're not?
Um, I believe that's today.
That is today? Are we that far away?
Yeah.
October just started, didn't it?
It just started, yeah.
We were, we were.
Yeah.
Let's see. So we've got the November four, Monday, meeting, and then we do have a November nineteenth meeting planned and December third and December seventeenth. So with that, Monday the fourth, that would give us four more meetings this calendar year. We could also not hold it. We have much to do, but as you can see with our last canceled meeting, we're able to work hard in between meetings as well, so.
I'm sorry, are you saying, do we want to have the meeting, or should we have it on a Monday?
I think it would be.
Two hundred questions.
Yeah, well, Commissioner Atkins asked what the alternative was, so I was bringing some alternatives, but I think staff's preference would be to have the meeting, because we have so much work to do.
Yeah, there, there are actually cities that are already presenting their, their plans to their councils, and so we're not yet at that point, so we do need to
Yeah.
keep on schedule. I would hope that you want to.
Yes, yes. Nothing I'd rather do on a Tuesday evening.
Okay.
Fourth works, and a Monday evening in this case. Okay. A couple other notes here. Alberto Vasquez, who has been our community planning and engagement coordinator for two years about now, is moving on. He's got a position with Parks, so he's not moving far, which is great. He'll be doing engagement around a grant that Parks Department has received around urban forestry and tree canopy. So building on the relationships he's formed around the city, that he'll put those to good use, and promises that he will feed us intel back into the comprehensive plan, anything to do with his work or anything that he hears on the side that is relevant to our work. So we wish Alberto well and thank him greatly for the work that he has done for the department. Karen Stewart, who is a planner, has worked for the department for a long time, and has also served two terms, I believe, as a planning commissioner. She is retiring. We have asked her to come to the next meeting, that would be the November fourth meeting, for a proper celebration of, of her time with the department and her contributions to the city. That's all the, the comings and goings for today. I have one more.
Commissioner?
Yes. Commissioner Zalinski, unfortunately, we received word this week that Commissioner Zalinski has passed away. So I know that was a sudden one when, when he had to recuse from the board, from the commission here, and it was, it was due to an illness, and I did not expect, did not expect that that fast, so. Heavy heart, and speaking of contributions to the city, Zalinski, Mr. Zalinski is right up there on top for the work that he's done for the city in a number of capacities. So hearts are with his family and everyone who's worked with him. We missed Michael. And that wraps up my staff comments.
Okay, thank you. Oh, gosh, our condolences to Commissioner Zalinski's family. I respected his work so deeply, and I think the other commissioners would say the same. We now have an opportunity for public comment. To those joining us remotely, please mute your microphone if you're calling in. Mute your phone by pressing star six at each opportunity for public comment. I will ask if anyone wants to speak. If you are participating remotely and would like to provide comment, unmute your microphone or press star six on your phone. Please provide your name for the record, and when you're done, please mute again. If you are in attendance and would like to comment, please fill out a speaker sign-in sheet located on the table by the door. Ayana, do we have anyone in person who would like to comment?
No comments.
Do we have anyone remotely who would like to comment?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Then we are ready to move on to item, agenda item number four.
I think that turns to me. So what we have been doing for the past few weeks, well, I know you've missed meeting with us terribly, is working from the urban form guidelines and goals that we had set forward and the land use map that you have seen in various iterations, to what does this really mean as far as code is concerned? So we have looked at all of the different areas of code and the policies and goals that we've put together and have started a draft discussion worksheet. And like we've said, this is a working situation here, so what I'm going to do is take the comprehensive plan classifications and uses worksheet and work through row by row and go through what we have evaluated and what, where we see it potentially going. So the first row is neighborhood residential constraint. This, in the current iteration of the world, is a single-family residential zone. It is primarily for one and two-unit dwellings and some other uses, and as well as accessory dwelling units. It's spread across the city, but what we are saying is that in certain areas of the city that have limited access, are on potentially steep slopes and other natural constraints, it is probably wise that we do not permit additional net new dwellings in the event of an emergency or other major catastrophe. Hopefully, they never happen, but we need to plan for them, and we need to make sure that our communities are safe. So what we are recommending is that the Valley View neighborhood be zoned NRC, as well as some neighborhood, some streets in the neighborhood bluffs area that are greater than seven hundred and fifty feet in length, and that includes the spur cul-de-sacs, too, that are farther away from the main thoroughfare. And so that they will essentially be permitted to remodel, rebuild with fewer, no new net new dwellings, just depending on where they are or what the situation is. So I think that's the easiest one. Any questions?
Are we expanding this? Is this a current zone? Is this a current zone that exists?
This is a new zone.
So what would, so these areas would be zoned from currently neighborhood residential down to neighborhood residential C?
Yes.
There's not yet a neighborhood residential zone, so they would be, they're currently RS, R one, and a small area of UR three in Valley View. The idea would be to not increase the development capacity. I think for the most part, all of the areas that we're looking at are more or less built out under existing density, minimum lot sizes and those sorts of things.
So they would get a new name, a new designation, but what is the practical impact to, to those homeowners and property owners? Is there really, is it changing from what is currently there?
They would be allowed to keep what they have.
But as far as, as far as how they're, how it's currently zoned, is it, is it, I'm just wondering, was this, could this essentially be viewed, if I was a homeowner here and all of a sudden I'm told that you're going to be an NRC, has, would I feel like something had been taken away from me?
It depends on who you are.
Well, yeah.
So somebody might say yes, somebody might say no. The Valley View neighborhood, when we talked about middle housing, was adamant that they did not want middle housing because of the steep slopes and the lack of access and the lack of water. The fire department has said that water is an issue there, but then you also have a whole series of streams that, and springs in that area. So they were, that, the, the, the Boulevard Bluffs area, this may be something new to them, but I think that they also value their single-family zoning and the, the nature of the streets, the ravines, changing of climate, getting drier and warmer in the summer, and the potential for wildfires in those ravines with ignition source along the railroad tracks. It's a real potential for urban wildland interface, and that's a big consideration. And since all of them have single access primarily along Muckelteo Boulevard for getting out of that area, and even to get out from the south in some areas is very difficult. So again, they would be able to maintain their single-family dwellings. They would not be able to add additional dwellings for the most part.
Yeah, no, I, I, I guess I understand the base for it, and I guess it sounds, it sounds reasonable. I'm just trying to anticipate if, you know, if someone lives there, what would, did they say, well, how you had it, I could have done this, now you're telling me I can't do this anymore, and I'm just trying to get a sense for what that might be.
It could be ADUs.
That, that was going to be my question, is, is there an impact with regard to the ADU guidelines, the new ones permitting?
Currently on the books in the city?
Yes. Okay, so, so this designation, the, the NRC, would constrain ADU?
Future ADUs.
Future ADUs as well, and constrain them to what? To, to not permissible?
If they were, what we are saying is, at this point, if they are within the dwelling, it would be permitted, but if they are accessory, the potential is no.
Okay. Is it that the potential is no, or that it is a no, meaning that there would be a, a review process for someone who may feel that, because the areas you're talking about, I one hundred percent agree with you. The Valley View neighborhood, if you have walked that neighborhood, then you understand why this is necessary, and same with the, the Boulevard Bluffs. It makes complete sense. But there may still be opportunities for ADUs on some lots, and so would this remove that as a possibility from homeowners? Or would there be a review process through which they could seek the ability to build an external?
That's why we're talking to you.
Okay. Okay. Well, commissioners, how do you feel about that?
And I guess that raises a question, because you could, it seems to me you could accomplish this a couple ways. The NRC zone, saying, oh, he can't do this, or you could, we could draft the ADU policy in a way that would say that you, you couldn't get approved in certain sensitive areas that would be described in that way. So I guess I'm almost wondering if?
Like amending the, the ADU?
Yeah, so, so not, so not saying that you couldn't do it as, as a matter of zoning, but you're not going to be able to do it as a practical matter, because you're not going to be able to meet the qualifications for an ADU to begin with. Am I wrong that, that that would be two different approaches, ways to kind of get to the same thing?
Yes, I tried my hand at both of those. They're both challenging to really articulate. The easiest part is this one-sentence remodels and rebuilds with fewer, no new, net new dwellings. That's about where we're at right now, is, is the, the concept. And then we'll layer details on to that of how strict it is, whether there is a process by which you could get around it, if you could demonstrate X, Y, Z.
Yeah. I mean, if somebody had, let's say their lot was rather large, and there was a way for them to connect that to another street to exit out, that would be something that they could overcome.
Even if they were in a, in our, NRC?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, it would still be a path?
It would still be a path, because they would be providing a second access or exit, so that it wasn't all going out to one single point, but if there was a way to connect out to another area. And when I was looking at maps, there were lots that I thought, wow, you could solve this issue right here. But, you know, I'm not going to solve it, I'm not buying the property and doing it, but there are ways of doing it. For some of them, yes. For others of them, no. Because they do back up on the ravines.
Do you know how many acres we're talking about, or, no, like?
The, the map?
Yeah, how much land are we talking about?
We do have that. If you go to the residential map, I believe, there's one that you have in your stack that's just the residential zones, I think.
I mean, we could, what, you're at Valley View, and it's this?
Mm-hmm. And then, let me see.
Yeah. So Valley View is on this latest zoning map, and that's what folks will be able to follow along on the planning commission webpage. You can get a copy of this zoning map. Valley View is identified with the hatching there. The Boulevard Bluff streets, since they're a little bit more, how many feet is too far, how many branches, those sorts of things, we have not worked out, so those are not yet on the map.
We have, we've worked out part of it, we just have not, no, that, all of that.
It would be individual streets or branches that are served by a single access point of more than X feet.
So if you look at this one here that comes in dead ends, if you're looking at it, would be all of that that wouldn't be able to add to, or some of the ones in here that are longer. This is a dead end, that's more than seven hundred and fifty feet, because it comes through from here. Yeah, it does not have a second road. But we, we have started to identify them, and we do have them on a map, just not here. We can send it to you.
But the proposal here is, the consideration here is that
Yeah.
you're going to do that entire neighborhood.
No, we're not doing the entire neighborhood, no. We're just doing designated streets.
Valley View is the entire neighborhood, because the entire neighborhood is across a single-point bridge over I five. In the Boulevard Bluffs and Harwood, you see Hearst, Glenhaven neighborhoods, there are a handful of streets that themselves are up to a mile.
Over a thousand feet, yeah, more than a thousand feet.
So the idea is that those would be identified, and then the parcels behind that point would be zoned as such. There is the alternative, and that's what I had tried to write in logical terms, what the conditions would be. More, you have one primary access, the secondary access is, does not exist, or more than X number of feet and this many branches, and it was really hard to do.
I don't, I, I guess I'm trying to think of, we already have code sections that prohibit development in steep slopes, and we certainly have public works, road sections that deny, you know, so many units beyond a certain threshold, right? So why are we, I mean, if that's already there in place to ensure that we're not developing beyond safety, why would we make a special category for them to deny potential to have, you know, where it would work?
Well, where it would work is permitted. Where it, where it is greater than two hundred and fifty feet, which is what the, the building code says you then have to sprinkle, but it does not provide access for egress. So in the event of a major event, how would all of those people get out safely? And so if they're all coming to a single street from a neighborhood, getting onto another street that serves a whole lot of neighborhoods, are we wisely planning, as we should, for potential emergencies or whatever? And so by limiting future development, is that not what we should be doing as a, as a city? And it's not saying you can't develop, it's just saying you can't add density.
Yeah, I'm just not, I guess I'm questioning using the curtailing of density to control safety. I just feel like we have more appropriate mechanisms where more trained people are looking at that and not using a, a blunt interest, an instrument such as density to control that. So that's what I'm questioning.
So what would you recommend control it?
I think we already have those in place. I think you can only have so many units on a, on a, on a street and access, right?
No.
I disagree.
Not right now in the city. They can be sprinkled, but you cannot, you can add them.
There's no limitation on ADU at a certain point where you have to have a turnaround, or you have to have connections?
Not on an existing street.
Well, you're adding something to that street, correct? You're right. If there's something that's existing, you may not have the authority to go back and change it, but we're talking about adding things.
We're talking about existing lots right here, primarily. If you were to subdivide the lot and put in enough units, then you would have to create a street potentially, but we're not talking about creating additional, we're just saying even on the existing lots, that they adding the exist, adding additional units. So if, if there was a piece of property in the Boulevard Bluffs area that was big enough to subdivide into six, ten lots, they would then have to provide a turnaround, yes, of some sort. But if, for an existing lot that is big enough to put two ADUs on it, they don't have to provide anything. So what we're saying is you're adding So what we're saying is you're adding density in an area that is already constrained with access. So therefore, we are recommending not to add more density in a constrained access area.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm still not convinced. I think I would want to, I would want to have the fire marshal and.
I've discussed this with him and we're more than happy to have that conversation too.
Yeah, I feel like, because I, I feel like really you're trying to shut down density backhandedly and get around the whole purpose of the missing middle, so.
Is this really just targeting ADUs?
Primarily, yes. And, and two to four units or whatever.
And potentially tearing down a single family to put up a, a four.
Yeah, I mean, these are, looking at Boulevard Bluffs neighborhood, some are within the RS zone. They were limited to fairly large lots. Now, the flip side of that is with the middle housing neighborhood residential framework that we're putting together, now that provides for a pretty significant potential for density. So ADUs is on the marginal side. A 10,000 square foot lot with 28 feet and 50% lot coverage could add up to quite a few units. And then if you repeat that multiple times, then you could incrementally work your way into a significantly, significant increase in the number of units behind that single access point that I understand that the fire code may not catch those sorts of things. That the fire code is, can I get a, a truck in here in the amount of time to put out the fire? Not the same as can I get everybody who's behind this single access point out? These are conversations that we're continuing to have with our emergency management team and with the Fire Marshal's office. And then we'll have to discuss this directly with the neighborhoods as well. So this is in the very early stages of, of scoping out.
And I did meet with the fire marshal over this recommendation and so it's not news to them.
So a question, because I, I guess I kind of see the, I, I see the Boulevard Bluffs neighborhood as a little bit different. It's a, you know, the, the streets are constrained, I suppose. They, they don't necessarily have, you know, you can't, you do have to sometimes enter and exit through the same street. But the, the Valley View neighborhood is, I, I think it's pretty cut and dry there. I mean, I've walked that neighborhood and I've seen what's going on there. And I, and I don't think it's just a safety concern. I think it's also an environmental concern specifically in that neighborhood. And there really isn't even a safe walking path in and out of that neighborhood. And so I'm wondering, Commissioners, do you see the Boulevard Bluffs area as being the same as the Valley View area for this purpose? Or do you think that maybe they should not both be treated the same?
I, I would veer towards not thinking that they should be treated the same. I, I think Valley View just has, is too concentrated and too big of a special case to lump it in with certain streets on, in Boulevard Bluffs.
I disagree. I personally think that we should, I mean, I think what, let me back up. I do disagree, but the reasons I disagree are probably a little bit blanketed. If I watch another unprecedented storm wipe out another city, I just don't know if it's worth the risk for, you know, 50 additional houses or 150, I don't really know what the number would be. It's a safety thing for me and I just don't, I'm like, nope, that's fine, safety. That's kind of my line.
Well, it seems to me that no, I don't know that anybody would necessarily disagree that the safety, that the goal is, is, is appropriate. I'm just wondering about the mechanism, if this is the right mechanism for doing that. I mean, I, that's what I kind of sense and that's kind of my trepidation is I'm not quite sure that. I feel like that's the most sensible way or easiest maybe way to do that. By carving out another, you know, zone.
And you were kind of making a good point, which was like, how do, could we pepper this into some of the ADU language? That's kind of what I was hearing.
Yeah, or, or.
A valid point. And if we can achieve a similar goal by doing that, like by all means, but if we're just, we just don't feel good about telling this neighborhood that they can't build ADUs because we think there's a huge potential for density. Like, why, why, why do we think that? We should really open that up because I'm not, I don't know if that's true. I'd want to hear what the neighborhood says too, right? This is a recommendation, this is a thought, I'd want to hear what they say. And it seems very specific. If this was huge, I would agree, but it seems very specific and detailed, so.
I, I think we are talking about a relatively large area around the Boulevard Bluff scenario.
Yeah, the Valley View thing, it seems pretty straightforward.
I guess ADUs have not been a pathway to significant density and I don't think we expect them to be a pathway to significant density. So the, I guess the thing that gives me pause is that what I hear from community members is when folks want to build ADUs, it's often because a family wants to meet its own housing needs by being able to expand the use on their own property. And so it's not like they're trying to build a complex out of what was once a single family zone. So to tell them, you can't do that, I don't think we should do that lightly.
I think that's fair.
I, I also just want, I want to also point out, talking about ADUs, that like, I mean, thinking in terms of, are, are these occupants of these ADUs most definitely going to be driving? And I, I don't think that that's a definitive answer. I, I think that it's very possible that the people that would be occupying these ADUs would not be driving.
That's such a good point. And if you are building an ADU for family, which is true, it's probably elderly family. An elderly family can't travel by themselves. So if you're asking for a fire department to come in to help escort your elderly family, but they're having an issue getting to your street, I mean, that come, we just went full circle. This is not easy, I totally don't want to dismiss it as being easy, but.
Well, so I will say that where I live in View Ridge, well, Seahurst, right? Harborview, Seahurst, Glen Haven, I've had to call, you know, fire services. They won't come down my driveway, even though we're sprinkled, we have a turnaround. They're just like, no, we're not going to risk the truck, it's too much of a pain to do it. So anything that has to happen, they have to trek whoever needs assistance more than 200 feet up a hill. And praise our fire department, they're super happy to do that. But I get it. And, and if, if we can prevent that scenario, I'm on board, 100%.
So I would just like to add one thing. We're probably talking 10 to 15 streets or sets a series of cul-de-sacs.
I, I think, I think maybe that's, that's what's throwing me off a little bit is that it, it's not defined.
No, it isn't.
The streets are not defined.
We do have a map and I can get that to you and I'm more than happy to. And I apologize because I was out at the end of last week doing Thelma and the Waste Part Two. So it did not get into this group of stuff, so.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful for us to have a visual of what streets are we talking about? How many streets? How much of the neighborhood does this take up? Because, I mean, Commissioners, you're right, safety is of paramount importance. But so is allowing property owners to utilize their property to the highest and best use within reason.
And if we were to designate certain streets, I'd like to see a path forward like, hey, if a developer wants to come in and, you know, connect it to Street B, they can lift that restriction. And that would be a not process, it has to go through a comp plan change.
Correct.
Right? So that would be my goal as well.
I was just going to say, in some ways, the small size of it is kind of what gives me a little bit of angst because it does feel like you're almost kind of picking on certain people because it is so small. If it was larger, I almost feel like I'd have less, maybe, a better feeling about it.
Unfortunately, geography doesn't help that.
And I, and I get, and again, it's not because the, I don't, the level of goal, absolutely agree with that. It's just whether or not that's the right mechanism for achieving that.
And, I mean, I'm more than happy to talk to the fire department again, but that is usually a land use decision rather than a fire code decision. And the fire code is at the state level with a few additions at the local level. And again, that's a little bit more difficult and challenging.
Well, I think it's combined. You're talking about safety and access, so it's really public works as well.
And we have talked.
And I think it's, well, you know, thanks for not involving us, but, you know, it'd be nice if that could have been shared. Again, I think for me, it's shocking because it feels like a really large area that we're counting on density. And we hadn't talked about it, so I feel like it's a little out of the blue. And I think it's very undefined for me. So and the number of people and the number of units that would be shutting down by it.
We're trying to bring you in at the front stage, so that's why some of this is a little bit un, hasn't been completely vetted yet. If you're watching this in real time, to be clear, it's not the whole neighborhood. This is portions of streets that are a thousand feet and beyond from the nearest intersection to a multi. So I, I think it's like a few percent of the, of the parcels in those neighborhoods. But we'll bring, we'll bring back a lot more information about it at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
So that was the easy one.
That was somewhat easy one. So now starting at neighborhood residential, one of the things that the state has asked in developing neighborhoods and developing comprehensive plans is for us to look through a sustainability and equity lens and also trying to figure out how to best meet the needs moving forward. And historically, cities and neighborhoods were very integrated communities. They, people lived, they shopped, they worked frequently in their neighborhood. Well, starting in about 1926 with Euclid versus Ambler in the Supreme Court, and that's really getting into the planning weeds. We, we've had the decision that land use was okay and it was okay to be separated. Originally, land use was only separated because of the fire code and it was based on that. So what Euclid versus Ambler and Euclidian zoning did was said, we are going to have residential neighborhoods, we're going to have commercial, we're going to have industrial and we'll keep the nuisances and the uses apart. And what that did was essentially cause us to spread out more and to drive more. So we have in Everett, evidence of commercial buildings in our residential neighborhoods. We have areas that became commercial over time. We have existing businesses on, adjacent to them. We have existing businesses in the middle of neighborhoods. So having looked at all of that, we are recommending that we remove the neighborhood business zone and we allow for certain permitted uses within the neighborhood residential districts. They would be grocery specialty stores, deli butcher, vegetables, cafes, pubs, cobblers, tailors, bookstores, hair salons, and things that people use rather regularly to go into either historic buildings or on corner lots. They would have no setback essentially from the street or the corner. So you couldn't build the 7-Eleven with the sea of asphalt in front of it to serve as a local convenience store. You'd have to put the store at the corner to be the corner store. You could provide parking off the alley or on street. We're not saying that it needs to have parking in front of, as a parking requirement and that the hours of operations would be limited between 6:00 in the morning and 11:00 at night so that people could walk and do some of their basic stuff without getting in the car and traveling and causing congestion or whatever. So what we are recommending is that in the NR zone and in the additional urban residential zones, that this group of res, limited residential uses be permitted on those corner lots with the criteria that are on the neighborhood commercial zoning section. And then we have a whole list of the existing neighborhood business zones that we can talk about in a minute. So the neighborhood residential would be allow buildings up to three floors. It would allow businesses within walking distance, as I just described. It would allow one, two ADUs, townhomes, essentially everything in middle housing, up to three stories. Any questions? Yes.
Is that three stories at 28 feet or three stories at something above?
30 feet.
30 feet?
Yeah, this one might actually be the easiest one other than the neighborhood business piece of it because we've taken middle housing as its own entire work program. So nothing has changed from the two meetings, May and June, where we went through every single one of those. We haven't made all those decisions, we've heard the recommendations and we'll bring all of that back to you. But yeah, the three floors was based on those discussions.
Yeah, regarding the prohibited uses, what was the thought behind moving offices and, specifically offices and vet clinic to a prohibited use?
Just the not necessarily active. Vet clinic could be go in, it doesn't matter. It was the potential for more noise, more potential impact around other uses around the area.
And there, one more was probably maybe more for the offices is that inherently it's not often neighborhood serving. So the point of these is that it's, it's for the neighborhood and daily needs types of things. A workplace may be better suited to an actual commercial zone.
And so kind of going further from there, with the three floors that someone could build, could someone theoretically, if, if we did allow offices, could someone sit there, build a three story building, have like a cobbler or a laundromat or something on the first floor and then do offices on the second and third? Would that?
No.
No?
This is primarily residential. There are other areas for that. Yeah, you could have apartments.
So does the, the three floors, does that, like, I couldn't make a three floor bookstore?
No. You could make a one floor bookstore because your maximum square footage is 33,000 square feet in size.
Is it constrained to one floor or 3,000 square feet in total volume, like?
I'm not going to argue that at the moment. I'm not defending, I'm not anything.
Just curious about that.
I mean, if somebody really wanted to make a two story, you know, split it and whatever, I, that's up to them.
So the, the three stories, three floors, 30 feet, does that include the roof? Or is that just to the?
I, I don't think we've advanced beyond where we were in May, June with that. So we left some of that undetermined. I think I heard 35 feet as being pretty unanimous from the Planning Commission then. So that's, that's still what we're working with. We owe you another full round on middle housing to get to. We had talked about middle of the roof, eaves, do we want to encourage pitched roofs? And I think a lot of that is TBD still.
Sorry to keep going on this, this thread, but do we define co-working spaces any differently from regular offices?
Currently, co-working is primarily a business than which you also live in. It is allowed in only some zones. I am not sure that what's.
Allowed in the industrial zones, definitely, I don't know.
Yeah, because I know there's that like new co-working space in downtown. But I, I'm just.
Oh, sorry, co-working, I was thinking live work, sorry. Co-working, I think, would be, would be office, but if that was more neighborhood serving, which I would think it would be if you were going to work from home, but not quite at home, but near home. So those are the types of things that we could work in.
Because I, I get the argument about, like, offices are not necessarily neighborhood serving. But if someone were to want to build like a one story co-working space, I could see that being of beneficial use to the neighborhood as a whole, especially in the post-pandemic era we're in.
Coffee shop and co-working space. Okay, so if you turn to the second page of the neighborhood commercial zoning, we went through a, a conversation on some of these a few weeks ago when we discussed the potential for what the neighborhood nodes and some of the neighborhood business districts is whether they were going to become nodes or whatever. So what we did was we went through all of them and gave them what their future uses would be. These are all the NB zones here. So we can sort of, and pretty much what we did was we went through and took, for the most, majority of them, we went through and took what is proposed around them and if that was a mixed use enough or a higher urban residential use that allowed mixed use, would that? or a higher urban residential use that allowed mixed use, would that work? And so that's what we've assigned at this point in time. And we can go through these at the end after we've gone through the UR series, which is on the next page. And it is the UR four, UR seven, and right now. So UR four is essentially the same, I mean, with each of these, the mixture of residential grows. So it goes to four stories or to seven stories. So hence UR four, four floors, and UR seven, seven floors. So it's low-rise residential to mid-rise residential. And we did look at the potential for adding, and this is question number one on your list when we get to UR seven. But what we were saying in the, initially, as we were putting these together, that we were limiting the uses, again, on the lower stories potentially. But how much square feet and the types of uses as it got more intense and residential, we were hoping to have a little bit more of a conversation as to what that meant. Should we add more commercial uses potentially to the more higher density areas? And/or how much of the floor could be used for that? So I open it up again.
Yes, oh, sorry.
Yeah, going back to just the office thing, especially for UR seven, I know we're not quite there, but?
We are.
It would just, that would definitely be a non-residential use that I think would be very appropriate, especially in kind of that mid-rise residential. Just putting it out there. I really just like having offices near residential spaces. You know, I think that it just brings that foot traffic and just helps make a space feel more full, like not full, but rounded.
Okay. I agree with that point. When you asked about the, for non-residential use, are you asking like the entire first floor? Or, oh, should we only allow 85% of the first floor? Or is that the actual question that you're asking?
That is part of the question, yes.
Okay. Why would, if we didn't add, allow 100%, what would the? Okay, let's say we only said 75%. What's the other 25%?
Could be townhouses.
Is just being residential?
It'd be residential.
Can I ask about the four and the seven? Where did those numbers come from? Why four, why seven, why not five and eight?
I was going to mention this at the beginning. So you remember these alternative maps? These are the ones that we've been working from for the first couple of years of this process. We've started to work on a preferred alternative, which is based on Alternative Three, the dispersed alternative. In the where column, you can see identified as various things on the preferred alternative map. And so that's where there's that connection. So the low-rise residential, that's the low-rise designation without the squares on it, which means that it's mixed use, now becomes the UR four zone. So the four floors was the low-rise. And that goes back to pretty early in our process. It's not a lot more than three and a half floors. But a big differentiator with this low-rise zone is that it would have high lot coverage and low setbacks. Whereas neighborhood residential would have higher, lower lot coverage and higher setbacks. So it would, even though it's only one-floor difference, it could result in significant difference in scale.
And then the seven is, I mean, just?
Seven was?
Areas that are already higher. I guess what I'm, here's what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is this idea of, I mean, I'm, we need more, we need more. We need more, we need lots more residential. And you got residential, you want to have some business activity, you've got to have things for people to do. And so we need more. So I'm wondering if, are we, is this maybe not aggressive enough? I mean, I understand maybe, or is this the idea we're trying to go incrementally to provide? Okay, we're currently now at a, maybe a three-story. We're going to go up to just a little bit with the idea that maybe 30 years from now, we'll go up to a UR five. And I'm just wondering, maybe there's opportunity to just say, you know, let's just skip the increments and provide up to UR, I don't know, eight? With knowing that realistically, it's unlikely that it's going to, we're going to go overnight from that. It's going to be a gradual, anyway. I guess I'm just wondering, is this too, is this too conservative for the idea that we need, we need more of this now? That's my only inquiry. I don't know the answer.
Real quick on that. And I know we're not there, so I don't want to jump too far ahead. But when we do get to the mixed-use ones, four, seven, 15, is that going to follow the same thing, mixed-use four floors? Okay, I didn't look. And mixed-use still means you can have residential, right?
Yes.
Okay. So it's, so we do still have the potential to have taller buildings? Okay, but I hear what you're saying. I just always come out, you know, Silver Lake over here. For us, ours is this fun little line. And it follows right along 19th. And then it becomes gray, which is because it becomes county. The red is right up to the county line. So you're looking at a 15-foot building next to a single-family home. So I get a little, I like the gradual increase versus jumping a little bit bigger. I'm hoping that it's a seven-story building versus a 15-foot building next to that single-family home. But it might not be. But aesthetically, it would be better if it was, or even a four.
I think most people would generally agree with that, too. And that's maybe the dilemma. But I guess on the other hand, I'm thinking, growing is hard. Growing pain, it's always hard. At some point, there's always going to be a transition period. Are we at an inflection point where there is opportunity to, let's not go small. Let's go big, provide for what we maybe, you know, aspirationally should go for. And knowing that in the process, there's going to be a few of those hiccups. But, you know, looking long-term where we're going.
I think looking at the map might help a little bit with that, too. Because like if we're looking at MU UR fours and we're like, yeah, all right, that feels good, then maybe, I don't know. I kind of like four and seven, so I'm not really pushing my agendas actually to leave it there. But I also recognize what you're saying. Because that is the ultimate goal, is to build more housing.
A lot more. I mean, that's where, we don't need more housing. We need tons more housing.
So what I hear you asking is how does this proposed, how does this proposal track with our numbers that are needed, with our growth projections? And is this just barely getting us there? Or does this leave us additional room for growth? Or is that, is that kind of what you're thinking, Commissioner Yanasek? Like, are we being conservative where we're barely giving ourselves enough buildable lands to meet our growth projections? And should we be thinking beyond just those most immediate projections?
I think that's part of what I'm, I mean, I'm just asking the question, but I think that's part of it, yeah. Are we, are we maybe limiting ourselves without there being a real great justification for? Because again, I don't think that if we change it tonight to UR seven, tomorrow, all these buildings are going to pop up. That's not going to happen.
Right, right.
So?
So I just want to make one point. So this table is listing all of the zones that we would have. And then it depends where and how much of each of these zones. In this case, so cross-referencing it with the map here, it's this golden rod color. It's a pretty significant area that is currently limited to 28 feet, 40, 35% lot coverage. Minimum lot sizes that basically constrain development. How much additional development capacity? We have our growth targets. We've done an initial land capacity analysis in Alternative Three. If you use kind of a likely development framework, it was just about right for our capacity. We'll do a new one when we have kind of a more firm proposed map here. The theoretical capacity was huge because there's, it's a big city. And if you assume that every single parcel redevelops up to its maximum capacity, there was much more than we need for our target. But that's not how development in cities works. So you have to assume that it's going to be a slow turnover and not everybody's going to build to that capacity. So I think we'll need a low-rise zone. Alternative Two did study, the corridor frames were mid-rise, I think. So that would be a way to create more capacity would be to choose higher zones. But we would not probably want to have a four-floor zone anywhere.
Great point, yeah.
And we have not yet had a discussion on like setbacks and?
No.
I don't recall that, Commissioners, do you recall?
It's not like a hard and fast conversation.
Yeah, because that has a huge impact on how much land is actually buildable when we have giant setbacks and we're only allowed to build on a small percentage of the parcel itself. So when will we have that discussion?
We are working on, I mean, at a conceptual level, how we've had it in some of the tables and packets going back is that neighborhood residential would be, as it's defined in state law and elsewhere, it's consistent with the existing character, which is, has a lot coverage below 50%. And so our assumption is that, I think we covered this when we talked middle housing, the state model code, model ordinance has maybe 50% lot coverage, where we're currently at 35 to 40% lot coverage. Much more than that, and you start to strain the character of largely defined by open spaces and yards and everything. For most of the other zones, we had expected lot, small setbacks and high lot coverage. Currently, our current existing UR four zone has 10-foot front setback. UR three and the single-family zones are 20-foot setback. Neighborhood business, business, mixed urban, and all the others have a zero setback and 100% lot coverage. So I would, how I envision this low-rise zone is that it is near 100% lot coverage and it is 10 feet or less setbacks. That this is, permits an urban-style building that can pretty much cover the whole lot. Middle housing, we're at 20 feet front setbacks. Do we want to shrink that down? That's a conversation that we have not really had yet. But our assumption is that for everything more intense than middle housing, it's going to be pretty high lot coverage and pretty low setbacks. We have very wide right-of-way, and we had this discussion about whether there's accounting, that's more on the middle housing side, for extra wide rights-of-way. But even in the low-rise zone, for example, you're going to have open space because the right-of-way is usually bigger than the actual street and sidewalk. So I think what, if anybody has any input on that general direction, which I think we've had in various materials going back, we'll take it. But otherwise, you would see numbers start to appear. I've got, here's our table for our existing setback standards and everything. We'd produce something like that for all of these zones. Our first step is to create the zones and the general direction for them. And then we'll start to add specifics and run it all by you.
Okay.
So I think that for, at least as proposed for UR four and UR seven, 3,000 square foot limit seems silly to me in a low way. I would suggest we tie it in a, you know, percentage of livable space is allowed as commercial. So if you had, you know, 20, 25,000 square feet of livable space, you could have 15, 20% of that as commercial space in the building. And you can put it on whatever floor you'd like to put it on. But tie it in a ratio so that the bigger your building gets, you also get the ability to have more commercial space there.
Yeah, I concur. I think it's silly to have the same limit for UR seven as the neighborhood residential.
We were a little bit responding to our existing comprehensive plan that has some policies that say very mean things about non-residential zoning. Do not expand commercial zoning. Do not allow businesses in residential areas and those sorts of things. So clearly, we're moving in a direction for the next decades. And some of that's going to be a little bit more permissive. As Allison mentioned, some of the, you know, neighborhood business, we've been talking about it a long time. There's that neighborhood business framework for the neighborhood residential. Do we want to go one step? And that was one of the questions, discussion questions in the memo. Do we want to go one step higher in terms of allowing more in the way of commerce in the low-rise, mid-rise, or others? But so far, we've kind of kept most of the business activity into the zones that currently allow business and non-residential activity.
As a native New Yorker, I concur. So this ends the residential segment. Do you want?
Let's pause and see if we have any public comment at this time. Ayana, do we have anyone in-house or remotely?
Notable, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to mixed use. So what you will find that's different in the mixed-use section, the heights are the same. The allowable commercial is expanded. So, and then the question comes in, how much of buildings? So if you're doing a mixed-use building of four stories, seven, or 15, how much of that can be a mix of commercial and residential? But with the goal that we are looking at creating more residential than mixed-use potentially. So then the question becomes, okay, are we allowing one, two, three stories of a 15-story building to be a mixture of commercial and office? Or are we then, where are we sort of trying to break that down? Is probably the biggest changes. And so when we got to 15, it was like 100% net of floors one through three. And it was a little bit less as we went lower. But somehow or another, that got cut out. And I don't know why. But that's where we are on mixed use. And so it was trying to provide a variety there and make sure. And so how much as we go from four to 25? And obviously, with a 25-story, because that's the center of downtown, it could be 100% office. Or it could be a mixture. There is no sort of rhyme or reason.
So there's no perfect answer?
No, there isn't one. That's why we're asking you. Lots of heads are better than two, or three, or four.
So with the mixed-use 25 zone, does the language in this, in future permitted uses, is that saying no parking garages?
No surface lots.
Okay.
Which is an existing restriction in Metro Everett? No standalone parking.
So if my understanding is correct, you couldn't build and ever park? And if you were to build a parking garage, you'd still have to have active uses on the ground floor.
Okay.
So you'd have to hide it a little bit.
But this isn't precluding, like, someone making a very large building and then having an underground parking structure?
That is perfectly permitted. The other thing that I should probably recommend is that self-storage are not permitted in the centers, self-storage units.
Centers was referring to the map where we talked about center hubs, right?
The hubs in the neighborhood nodes, yes. And Metro Everett.
Outside of that?
Mm-hmm. The other thing you will notice is that there is no B-zone anymore. So all the Bs have become mixed use.
I don't, I don't see any allowance in, in any of the zones that would be likely to be residential for neighborhood mechanics. And I know, I know there is good reason to prohibit, you know, someone setting up a full-scale auto body shop in a neighborhood. But there is such thing as neighborhood mechanics, folks who work on cars for their neighbors. Where, where would that be permissible? How could we allow?
It's permissible in the mixed-use zones.
It still says excluded.
In the centers.
Those centered.
In the centers, not in?
Oh, okay, okay, excluded in the centers, but not?
Right. Not in the actual location and not in the actual mixed-use zones, yes.
And would it be, would it be possible to consider allowing it in the residential zones? zones? And, and putting appropriate constraints on something like that, but allowing it?
We do have existing ones that would be able to continue. Whether we would be, whether your fellow residents would like us to allow it even with certain constraints, I'm not sure.
Because a lot of this is like, I mean, a lot of these neighborhood mechanics, they're, they're doing this regardless of whether or not-
Yeah.
We're saying it's okay. Like, it's, they just open up their garage and do one car at a time.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think there's a prohibit, you're, you're not allowed to do commercial car repair in a residential zone. Um, I guess if you can pull it off with no one complaining to code enforcement, then you're doing it in a way that is not injurious to the neighborhood. Everything is on the table for change. Um, our current regulations, other than the kind of home occupation thing, which is restricted, is that automobile and truck service, light and body repair and painting are permitted in the LI one and two, the B and the MU zones, but prohibited on TOD and pedestrian streets.
Which are primarily in the center.
Yeah.
In the metropolitan center.
In the packets that you'll, will be waiting for you just after the meeting.
They've already got them.
Sounds like, oh, you did get them, okay, good. Um, there is the street designation map, and it's, uh, red and purple, I think, are the colors.
And I, I'm, I'm, I'm not thinking of the person who is, is trying to actually have a, a mini-service garage. I'm thinking of the person who, who wants to have a diverse stream of income and they happen to have this skill set, and, and allowing them to legally use their skill set, um, for the benefit of their, their family and their neighbors on a small scale without forcing them to do something that is technically illegal, where if they get into maybe a kerfluffle with a neighbor, that could be a basis for a complaint. Um, allow them to operate legally and above board and utilize their skill set to provide income for their family, but constrain it in a way where it does not harm the neighbors.
What, what would, I mean, I know we're not experts, you know what I mean?
Like, like, limiting, like, limiting the number of vehicles that can be worked on, limiting where, um, vehicles that are, are, that you're, are part of what you're working on for your business, like saying you can't park those on the street, or, you know, you have to be able to park them in your own driveway, or, or in your own garage, or putting some kind of constraints around it that would, uh, guide people, but allow them to operate legally.
In this situation, is this somebody, and I know I'm getting a little nitty-gritty, I'm just trying to, is this somebody who would have like a business and a business license, but they just operate, operate out of their homes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, it's not just like, this is not a cash situation. This is like, oh, I actually have a functioning-
And see, we're forcing it to be what you're describing. We're forcing it to be an off-the-book situation.
Right, right, because we're, we're not allowing it.
Right.
I honestly don't know, because then you get into environmental regulations, and that's another whole issue, because you'd have to be able to provide drains, you'd have to make sure all of those things, and, and as you're storing them, that they are in a safe manner or something to that effect. I, I don't know, and again-
Home occupation, right. So we still have that half-finished ordinance out there loitering, and at some point, we're gonna have to bring that back and take up, not, hopefully as part of this periodic update. Um, but I think that would be the place to work on, our assumption is that the neighborhood residential would have the same home occupation rules that we have now, and then hopefully at some point, we can get that home occupation code change, uh, shaped up and back, uh, on track, and that that would apply to the new neighborhood residential, and that that would be a great time to consider changes to, um, to that. I don't think in the ordinance that went to the council that auto repair was in the list of, uh, uses that could be considered home occupation, but I could be wrong on that, or maybe it was part of an umbrella, uh, non-impactful kind of a use. Um-
We have a historical home, uh, historical automotive use in the neighborhood that I live in currently. And, I mean, they have like half a dozen, I want to say, parking spaces on the street. They have, they're on a corner lot, so they have access to a garages on both street faces. There are no sidewalks. Um, and they do have a fenced lot behind, and there's nothing parked out in front of, when they are not open. I mean, and it's a pretty tightly-run one. And, um, I mean, it's historically been there, and, I mean, it dates back from when it was unincorporated King County. So I, I honestly don't know about establishing it. I mean, if you were to try to establish it now, I know that our neighborhood would say absolutely not, probably.
So nineteen dot thirty-nine dot oh-eight oh, if anybody wants to deep dive into this, is vehicle and equipment repair on residential premises, limited to repair of occupants' family, parents, grandparents, spouse, children, related by blood, marriage, or adoption. Precludes auto repair on residential premises by any commercial entity, one vehicle at a time, and, uh, hour limitations.
Are we checking birth certificates?
Huh?
Are we checking birth certificates and adoption papers?
No.
I, you know, if it came down to a code, uh, code complaint violation hearing, some of that would need to be demonstrated, yeah. Uh, I, I, I know we have some sites in the city that we've struggled with, uh, kinda controlling the, the entire yard, and everything is covered in half.
You said Section nineteen, is that the, um-
Title nineteen thirty-nine dot oh-eight oh is specific to vehicle and equipment-
Is nineteen, is that the zoning code?
Yes.
Oh, so it is already part of that, okay. I would just say, I don't have any heartburn about not, people not working on lots of cars in their residential neighborhoods. That causes me zero, zero problems.
I don't think there's anybody who wants neighbors working on lots of cars. But, but I, I think that, I think that we, we want to allow folks to utilize their skill sets and monetize them. Um-
What if their skill set's growing marijuana? I mean, where do you draw the line?
Well, I, I think especially with mechanics, like, I tried finding cheap mechanics that were reliable, uh, a couple of years ago, and I, I went through like two or three different ones that were in very obvious setups that, like, this was not an official business, this was just like in some random residential neighborhood where they're running a business out of their garage. Um, and so it's like, this stuff is already happening, how can we try to guide these people to a more, um, I guess, like permitted framework for doing their work and, uh, for earning their, their income?
None, none of us want the, the garage and auto body shop next door. I don't, I don't think that's, that's not what I'm, um, that's not what I'm arguing. Um, that's not the scale that I'm thinking of, and I'm just, and I know it's hard to define parameters.
I think where we have put the mixed use is on the edges of many of those neighborhoods, and on the edges on major connectors, and those, and the auto body uses, the automotive uses are permitted on those, in those zones, as long as they are not in one of the five centers.
Because, I mean, if I recall, um, even barbers and like hairstylists were prohibited in, as far as at-home occupations, um, that, I think currently they are.
They're, they're included in the neighborhood commercial.
Correct, correct. And so is there an, is there an opportunity to also consider including, um, car repairs on a small scale?
I, we have not looked at home occupations at all as part of this periodic update. Um, it would be, it's something that we could add to the scope, but it is, uh, well, you, you saw the amount of work that went into it last time, that's kinda hanging out there, and I'm, I'm not sure actually what our intention is to, to wrap up that. Uh, at various times, we were gonna reactivate it. Um, I think it was a fairly, I would, it would be difficult for us to pick up home occupations as part of the periodic update. I think we can definitely look at where auto repair is allowed in the rest of the zones, which could include the kind of floating neighborhood business concept for the neighborhood residential. If you could have a small car repair that could locate on a corner, now that could be any corner in the city. Um, that's something that we, I think, would be in scope for this project, but changing the home occupations regulations would probably be most efficiently done through the next iteration of that ordinance, which hopefully will not be too long, because I think everybody is unsatisfied with our existing home occupation regulations, although for probably different and conflicting reasons.
That's fair.
This, this ends mixed use.
I like, I like to support the side hustle of our community members, and make it legal, and have it be licensed, and, and have it be taxable. Um-
And I think that's, that's something that is, that is spot-on, and we're trying to get the right balance with, uh, encouraging some of these small-scale, small-business entry points into the commercial realm. Um, the neighborhood business change from defined zones to something where if you meet the standards, it can happen in lots of places, is one example of that. Um, looking at these mixed-use zones and despite what the comprehensive plan says now about not expanding commercial zoning, we've got an opportunity to allow it in a few more places, so always be looking at the maps, and is the Goldenrod area where we would be comfortable with a, uh, we don't have standalone businesses in the UR zones currently as framed, but we're thinking about within a building. I don't know if that, that could fit for car repair, if it can fit in the, you know, a small corner of a otherwise mixed-use building.
Change the subject. Um, why is cannabis retail called out on here? Is that, is this the only place that it's dictated? I thought it would have like its own set of rules somewhere.
It has a whole bunch of rules, but-
We just highlighted it to-
No, what, so there are use tables-
Mm-hmm.
-for each zone, and they're based broad, base, they're divided up by residential, commercial, industrial, and miscellaneous. So if, so when I was pulling together what was permitted, I went through each of the use tables. Some of them have footnotes, and some of them don't. If they had a footnote with some exceptions or something, I didn't do it. If they were flat-out permitted, then they were put in. If they were not permitted, they were put in as not permitted. And so some of the things that might have been permitted under residential, um, or commercial, and if there was multiple zones, so, um, in the mixed-use set of ones, you'll see on the left that there are, um, that some were zoned mixed-use, some of them were neighborhood business or whatever. So if they were permitted in one zone, I didn't repeat them again.
Sure.
So all I did was go through the tables. I am not an expert on this by any stretch of the imagination. I just wrote down what was permitted.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's where it all came from.
I was just like, specifically that jumped out, because I was like, well, currently, some of those centers have them, and if they're being reasonable, but I think it's a mute point, because I think most of them, in kind of this general area, are already gonna be in fifteen, so it kinda doesn't matter. All right.
Yeah, I mean, they'll still be able to exist.
Yeah.
It's just, yeah.
So to put a finer point on that, in the miscellaneous use table, marijuana retail is permitted in the business, the MU and the light industrial zones, although there is a whole set of regulations farther than the-
And so like what you're talking about was the B-zone. It was Zone B prior, not, not now. This is proposed.
Yeah, I don't have the whole picture, but I just think of where they are.
But we have, yeah, but we have marijuana retail as excluded in centers, which would be a change from now.
Right.
Well, and that's, one of the, I wish I, I don't have the centers map with me, but off the top of your head, I know that Silver Lake, was it a centers, or was it a node?
It was a node.
It was a node.
But it would, it would be considered a center, yes.
So if one already exists close enough, is it grandfathered in?
It'd be grandfathered.
All right, cool.
Mm-hmm, as would automotive uses.
Right, any of these, okay, cool, cool.
Yeah.
Have we considered, uh, changing the language that we use from marijuana to cannabis?
Thank you.
Yeah, we, yes.
I'm shuddering just a little bit at opening anything about marijuana as part of this project as well.
Well, we, we, we are updating the code. We should actually use updated language that is not felt, uh, some, there are, uh, community members who do feel some kind of way about the use of the term marijuana versus cannabis because of the history of why, uh, that word came about and how it came about. And so out of respect for the whole community, we should consider updating the language the same time as we update these, uh, these codes.
I think we can do a word, words.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's harmless enough.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that ends mixed use. We're now on to industrial. So if you wanna ask for comments-
Can I go back, Mom?
No, I guess so.
No. Um, I'd, I have thoughts about maybe not having a cap at twenty-five period for mixed use.
Okay.
Like, just, if somebody wants to build Smith Tower North, awesome. I don't care. I think that would be fantastic.
That was one of the discussion questions, yeah, why stop at twenty-five? And, and this is the darkest red in the core of Metro Everett, where we currently allow, I think, up to twenty-five.
Sorry, my bad for missing question number two. It's on my chichi.
Nope.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, if someone wants to come in and spend tens of millions of dollars building that, who are we to stop them?
Nope.
I concur.
Okay.
And, and we're talking about-
So MUX it is.
MU twenty-five specifically.
It becomes MUX.
Yeah, just the, like, the downtown, I mean, you wanna put like a thirty-five-story tower somewhere near Silver Lake, go for it, but, I mean, your vid, your view's not gonna be quite as nice as it's downtown. There you go.
MU Unlimited?
MU Unlimited, yeah.
No, MU Infinity.
And beyond. Commissioners, were there additional comments on this, this topic before we open it up for public comment again? Okay. Ayana, do we have, uh, anyone remotely or in person who wishes to provide public comment?
No comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, industrial. So currently, we have LI one, LI two, and HI. LI one is light industry, LI two is light industry, essentially industrial park, and HI is heavy industry. So what we, within Metro Everett, in the LI zone, you are permitted to have residential as part of your, um, industrial use. So it can essentially be a, a live-work, mixed-use, shop-type situation, or whatever. Um, you can also sell out of it up to, twenty-five percent of your goods have to be made on-site, and twenty-five percent, no more than twenty-five percent can be, come from off-site, and I have no idea how anybody measures it. It's sort of like birth certificates. So what we are basically saying is that we're not going to ask where your stuff comes from, or whatever, that it, we could potentially go to a square foot, but at this point, I don't know why we would want to go to a square foot for adding sales, but that's where we are. We, um, there are two changes within, well, there's one change within Metro Everett, and it is down here where it says L-one right now, that the port of Everett is requesting that that be changed from LI to essentially what would be L-two, which we are changing to L-one, because they don't want people living right adjacent to it and complaining about noise. So that is one map change that's being proposed. We are protect, changing LI to LI mixed use so that we are reflecting that it is a mixture of uses, but it, it's looking at using the base of the industrial uses. Um, just for future knowledge of you, for you, the only things that are permitted in every single zone in the city are community gardens and daycare centers. So if you need a good trivia question for your next cocktail party, there it is. I'm not sure I'd want them at all on the same sites as some of the industrial uses, but that's neither here nor there. So there are a couple of LI uses, one in particular that is south of Forty-first Street, and it's just east of I-five and west of the railroad tracks. It's the Arco Woods site. And, um, the question is, do we want to allow that to go to LI mixed use so that we can- do we want to allow that to go to LI mixed-use so that we can allow residential in that area? The property is currently for sale, and we've had some inquiries about taking it residential, which it is not permitted to go residential right now. And it is in a primarily residential area. So that...
Well, in order to, potential for MU7, would there be a downside to just moving it strictly to residential?
Well, it is a pretty industrial site currently. I mean, it's an active industrial site. It has a railroad spur. It has, and so that's, and it has been industrial for a number of years. So that's the only reason we were keeping it industrial, and it is adjacent to industrial to the north, but also providing for the option, using 41st Street as our barrier for more residential in the edge of Lowell.
Commissioner Adkins?
Going back to question three, is, for the name of that kind of business note at McCallteau Boulevard in Dogwood, at least among my friends, we've always just referred to it as like the Howarth Place.
The Howarth?
Howarth, because of Howard Park right there.
Oh, okay.
And so maybe we want to take...
That beats Karen's Corner.
I mean, How...
Or View Ridge Center.
Just something related to Howarth that might be a, a good way to kind of drive people to go to Howarth and then, you know. And then for the, that specific area that we're talking about over near the riverfront, I, I think moving it to some kind of mixed-use, it is very industrial. I, I drive by it like every single day coming from the riverfront townhomes, and it, it does seem like a good spot for just having some level of more residential, especially as it seems like the development along the riverfront seems to have slowed down, and just getting more, more people walking down there, getting more people using those spaces. You know, they still haven't opened up any of the commercial spaces, commercial storefronts down there. So I, I imagine part of it is just getting more people down, down in that general area.
And also adjacent to that property on Third, south of 41st, that is Zone B for the first like quarter to half mile. And so what we are, we have included that in the list of ones to be changed. And so that is the one at South Third Avenue and 41st Street. It's a B-zone to go to neighborhood residential, which would allow for the floating, for the floating business zones to go in there. Right now, it is primarily single-family residential. I think there may be one, two businesses, and then access to the Arco Woods site and a parking lot for the Arco Woods site.
I won't reiterate what Charles said. I just agree with him.
I'm sorry, are we leaning towards making it mixed-use or making it light?
Light use.
Light use, mixed use.
Light industrial, mixed use.
Right, okay, so it would have an option, so somebody could go either way. I guess the light industrial mixed-use, there's a couple of choices here. So currently the LI1 zone, which is the light industrial that's not in the southwest industrial, so that's mainly around Everett Station as well as south, the Acro Woods site, a couple others, allows residential, but only in Metro Everett. So we kind of have four industrial zones now. We have the part in Metro Everett inside this black line that allows and it contemplates a transition potentially of that area from its current industrial status to a more mixed-use and residential-focused status with transit-oriented development in the future. But outside of Metro Everett, residential is currently prohibited. So by making, we would, that's something that could be, you could, I mean, I, there's a strong policy rationale for keeping industrial land for industry because it's important for our economy and it's hard to find industrial land. But it's also desirable for, we need housing, we need job space and all of that's, that's too. So we need to think a little bit about both, just by calling it light industrial mixed-use. As we've currently scoped it, I think that would exclude residential outside of Metro Everett unless we wanted to change that. So it doesn't say that here. So, so this, this, so this is just strictly Metro then?
For the residential, yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I like the idea that it could be, it's, you know, we want to make it productive, right? So if there's a residential developer comes out and buys that, you know, let's get it done. And if there's, but if there's a industrial, I don't want it sitting there when it doesn't fix, right? So if we can have it, so it would be both.
I think having it both would be, be good, and I'd also like to discuss, you know, Airport Road and 526, where we've got some light industrial there. I think if we do allow it outside and allowing LIMU with future train arrival, I think moving those to LIMU makes a whole ton of sense to me, because you could do either or. And I know that you're probably going to have some people complain about the noise living next to an airport, but the airport's been there for a long time. So hopefully those people know that they're buying next to an airport, I would hope, which is why they're buying the house or, you know, the home that they're buying.
He'd be amazed.
Yeah. But yeah, I, I would support moving that, you know, east along Airport Road to, to LIMU and then probably all the way up to 526.
Okay, so the next one on the list, we're almost to the lucky last, the LI light industrial. That, this is currently the LI2 zone, primarily for industrial park. Now, there are two things that make this more LI2 than just going to LI1. The first thing is that it requires a 25-foot setback.
Might even be 50.
There might be 50. It's a lot of feet.
Yeah.
And it has landscaping requirements, and only 50% of the site is open for development, which...
That's, that's very low.
Small for a commercial building.
It seems very slow and slow and not terribly productive use of our industrial land. So what we are here to discuss is, should we change that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm glad we got a unanimous on something.
Where is this area though?
It's the industri, the MIC. You have the light purple, not the dark purple. Mm-hmm. Yes. So if, and this would then apply to this corner space for the port of Everett too, because then if you had this 25 to 50-foot setback in redevelopment, it makes it essentially an unfunctional site. And so that doesn't bode well for reuse or whatever. So those, that's where we are right now on that. So the recommendation is to change those to make it a little bit, a better use of the land rather than parking and landscape. I'm not saying that we will do away with landscaping, and we might go to more parking maximums, which is another aspect of where we are probably headed. Okay, yay, won. So that's question number five. And then we get to heavy industry, which essentially has no changes. Only issue is that we have three stories, five stories, seven stories, 10 stories, all permitted in heavy industry. And so what we are recommending is potentially going to 10. There are parts of it in the dark purple that are in the runway exclusion zone that will not be permitted to go to that height, and also along the shoreline. Smith Island, if they went to 10 stories, they'd all sink. But other than that, it's a wonderful idea. It was just trying to get to some uniformity and not trying to downgrade zones if necessary. And nobody's built to any of those heights anyway.
Would our zoning, it, it could all be impacted if the Navy came in and said, hey, we want to make, you know, NAS Everett bigger? Do they care, or do they just go federal land, stuff it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's kind of what I figured, but you know, sometimes they're like, we're going to play nice a little bit.
They, they still have to abide by EPA regulations and some of that stuff, but at the same time, they'll comment civil defense or national defense, and they'll still say stuff it.
Okay. Can I go real quick on this, this whole piece for the port? So we're, so consciously spot-zone that so it has no value, because somebody out there owns that?
It still has, it still has the same industrial value. Right now, it's L1.
Okay.
And it's just going to stay as L1, but it's not going to get the mixed use. So it's losing the residential. That's the only thing it's losing.
It doesn't.
We just have this big thing at the port though, I want to go.
Yeah.
This is a port request.
A portion of the area that the port was interested in restricting residential from is the MU zone. I think it's along the end of Hewitt. North of the railroad tracks is where it's currently LI1.
Is this, is this request by the port talking about just one parcel?
No.
It's about 10 parcels in the triangle.
Are they, do we know who owns? I mean, is it more than one owner?
Yes, they've, they've reached out to some of the owners, perhaps all of them by now.
Because I guess I, I guess I would agree with Commissioner Ballard that it does seem like kind of a...
I guess I'd want to know a little more about that, I think.
I mean, the port has an interest, but certainly the property owners themselves have, I would say, a larger interest.
On, I feel like we would prefer them not to use us to zone properties to do their negotiations.
Right, so I, yeah, I guess I would have to, I think that's a good point.
So as I understand, this debate goes back to before, to Metro Everett at least, before rethink zoning. And those properties used to restrict residential and through, I think it was Metro Everett, it transitioned into more of a mixed-use. The port was not happy about it then and has been seeking to roll that back since then. We'll give you more information about that, so.
Did they articulate why they are unhappy, why they were unhappy with allowing that mixed-use?
Because of its proximity to the, the cargo terminal.
Are they receiving complaints?
Noise.
Or are they just like, hey, it's our preference not to have houses where we can look at them?
Yeah, that, that it would be setting up for future conflicts. That if you build housing there where there currently is none, then eventually then that...
As a property owner, if I want to do that, I buy the property next to me. I think the port makes money. They can buy a property, and if somebody doesn't want to sell, it's not my job to tell them no. Personally, I would have a really huge time, hard time playing good cop or bad cop for the port.
Yeah, and I guess as I'm looking, I mean, that's pretty close to downtown. I don't know if we want to put residences in there, but if it was, someone felt it was appropriate for residential, I don't know that we would necessarily feel like that'd be a good thing to discourage in that part of the city where we're trying to increase density. So I don't know. That's, there'd be some issues. Would we be able to have the port come in and talk about that request?
I think we definitely should. So I told the port we would, we would consider it and give it its proper consideration, and this is just beginning that part. I don't think we've talked about this as a group yet. I'm still getting my exact geography right and everything. We will definitely...
So to be clear, they are not in conflict with the property owners at this time, but they anticipate that would become a source of conflict if that were, if residences were built there?
Correct. I think there was a, I, I'm not sure if it was in this area exactly, but there was a proposal for senior housing, and they worked with the property owner, and they were concerned about if you have people living very close to the cargo terminal, that it's, whether the developer builds it and doesn't much care what the people, and then the people move in and didn't realize it, and then it becomes a problem, that sort of a thing. Your typical compatibility problems around major industrial sites and major cargo-moving sites. We will...
They said currently no one lives there?
Depending what the geography is.
I mean, I hope I'm wrong, but there's like definitely an apartment building.
There is an apartment building in the red section.
On the end of Hewitt.
On the end of Hewitt.
Okay.
Not in the purple, which is why we, which is why we, they wanted to take it all the way down to Hewitt.
I'm sure it did, yeah.
And we, we have not changed that at all. And it was recently redone. And so what, the only one we looked at in that area was the L-zone that permits it to have residential and saying, yes, you can still be in industrial use, but we, we could potentially remove the residential aspect.
If we're talking about just a handful of parcels, is it, is it possible to specifically invite the owners of those parcels to the meeting that the port would speak on this issue at, so we could have an opportunity to hear from the folks who own it as to what their plans or intentions might be that could, you know, possibly help us consider this a little deeper?
Yeah, so next time we pick up this topic, which may be at the next meeting, I'll invite the port and we'll...
Reach out to the owners.
We'll reach out to the owners.
I just want to say one more thing. As to question three, I've been thinking about what Commissioner Adkins said. As a resident of View Ridge, I live about two blocks from that location. I can't, I can't come around to the Howarth. That's View Ridge. That's View Ridge. That's not Howard Park, so let me just make my two cents on that.
So you like View Ridge Center.
Something, something View Ridge.
My, my experiences are definitely like, I, I go there to go to Howarth. So it's like you get off on the, the 3 or the 18 stop there, and then you, you walk to Howarth. And so for me, the connection's Howarth.
Ask your neighbors what they call it, because we were like Lucky's Corner. That doesn't really work.
Well, my, my kids went to View Ridge Elementary, so that's definitely View Ridge.
Oh, yeah, View Ridge, right, yes.
Yeah. But also, it's also near Forest Park, so that, that was, I didn't, I know Howard Park is right there, but it doesn't roll up tongue the way, you know. So I was thinking if not View Ridge, then perhaps Forest Park Center or, or something along those lines. But if you talk to the folks who live there, they might disagree.
Well, ask around, because we don't know. We were joking because Karen Stewart lives near there, so we were calling it Karen's Corner, and she was like, absolutely not. So we really have, we were just trying to find a way to identify it. And we have a church, we could do VA Corner, you know, whatever. It just wasn't working, and so we were just...
Olympic Center, isn't that Olympic?
Avenue is in there or whatever.
Yeah, we're mainly looking for what people organically have come to call it, if such a name exists. Yeah, it's right there.
There's that VA outpatient, there's the church, it's a little tiny...
Friday Avenue or whatever right here.
No, that's not your...
I haven't been on that before.
Well, thank you for bearing with us, and thank you for all of your comments. We truly appreciate them, and wait for the next version of this.
What, what is going to happen to these big maps?
You may have them if you want.
Is there enough to hold them?
No, you have to...
Because we're all looking at these maps.
But if you want a big one, please leave a...
They're, they're very helpful, yeah.
And was this helpful to sit at the table?
I don't like it.
I think it was kind of nice.
I, I think it was, it was easier to look at the maps together.
Yeah.
It's kind of easier to argue.
Yeah, it's impossible.
Sorry.
On the screen, it's very difficult.
Yeah.
And for folks who are following along at home, all of these handouts, hopefully was at least somewhat clear what we were talking about or available on the Planning Commission webpage. They're already up there now.
And they will go into the library notebooks.
So before, before we take off, there, there, did I do the final opportunity for public comment? Let, let's just, we have one final opportunity for public comment before we adjourn. Ayana, do we have anyone?
No comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then with that, we've completed our agenda and we are...
Seth Crusoe, Rachel.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.